How do I get my screen right, you know? How do I get my screen right?
All time.
Do you have those all over?
This one.
No, I have lost them and I just found them.
In your jacket, right?
Yes.
So they were in here.
I was going to get another pair tomorrow. And my doctor said you can find them as soon as you.
The city manager doesn't know about that yet.
Good morning. Good morning and welcome to the March twenty-fourth City Council meeting. We're gonna begin with the invocation from Councilman Wynn and then we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll stand with me.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, in your word, you have given us a vision of that holy city to which the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, the cities of the earth. Renew the ties of mutual guard which form our civic life. Help us to be able leaders. Enable us to serve our community. That we pray peace will prevail with righteousness and justice with order and that men and women from different cultures and with differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we've got the minutes to approve from the meeting on January the thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion by Westbrook, second by McGee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Presentation P one. Kedrick.
Morning, Mayor, Council.
Morning.
You have item P one before you. It's a request the City Council consider. Hearing a presentation and approving the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty. Pro- Walter, we have Walter Wilhelm here today with Protho Wilhelm and Company. He's gonna go over, kinda summarize and hit the highlights of the audit report. This audit, a draft of the audit report, went to the Audit Committee on March sixteenth and to review and discuss the actual report. So there was a very lengthy discussion on the report and Audit Committee was updated as far as the progress of the audit at that point in time. So we have a small PowerPoint presentation that Walter's gonna go over with you all and will be available to answer any questions that you all have. And also, we're asking for a vote on this at the conclusion of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Kedrick.
Good morning, Mayor Warren, Council members.
Morning.
Mr. Bressart. I'm real pleased to report the, to present the annual financial report to you all. First of all, I want to recognize a key member of our team. A.J. Evans over here is an Audit Manager and did really just a great job leading the engagement. First slide, or the second slide we wanna go over is the awards and recognition. This isn't about us. This is about Kedrick and Lauren Justice and their team. I wanna highlight just a couple of awards that they received. The prior audit report. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, thirty-four consecutive years. This is given by the Government Finance Officers Association to governments who go beyond the minimum requirements to prepare annual financial reports that reflect transparency and full disclosure. And I can assure you that this report does the same thing as far as transparency and disclosure. Next, the distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Fourteen consecutive years. This recognizes budget documents of the very highest quality that meet and exceed best practices in budgeting. And then finally, the Investment Policy Certificate of Distinction. Fairly new award. This is the tenth consecutive year and recognizes investment policies that meet certain criteria. And I think Kedrick and Lauren deserve a good round of applause. Okay, now to our stuff. The next slide, the Financial Statements and Independent Auditors Report. I'm real pleased to report that we've issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements and it means that the financials are fairly stated in all material respects. There are two other reports I wanna bring to your attention that are included in the annual report. The first one is our Report on Internal Controls Over Financial Reporting. And I'm real pleased to report that there are no material weaknesses in internal controls. As you know, the city really does have a very strong internal control environment. I think that starts at the top, obviously with you all and then filters its way down from the mayor to Ed and also the department heads as well. Just very transparent in our discussions with them. You should feel really good about the discussions that we have with all the key leaders and department heads. The other report says Compliance and Grant Funding. This really relates to our report on the city's compliance with federal programs. We're actually required to issue an opinion on the city's compliance with those federal programs. And I'm pleased to report that, again, we issued an unmodified opinion and that means that the city complied in all material respects with requirements of those federal programs. We audited the C R F, Coronavirus Relief Fund, and also the Airport Improvement Program. Next slide is Financial Highlights. Again, just briefly, I wanna highlight a few things, things you already know about. Total assets of the governmental funds, eighty-two million. Total fund balance of the governmental funds, sixty-two million. And then the net change in fund balance, which in layman's terms, that's revenues over expenditures for fiscal year twenty twenty, five point eight million dollars. Some of that relates to property taxes, again, the government funding related to COVID. But I think really, more importantly, if you look at that next line, general fund expenditures for fiscal year twenty twenty, one point eight million under budget. And so, it was a very trying year. You know, now thirty, twenty twenty, it just shows again just what good stewards the city is of the citizens' funds. Enterprise funds, you have utilities, sanitation, and airport that comprise those funds. Total assets, three hundred forty-eight million. And then fund balance, two forty-five million. And then the net change in position, which again are your revenues or expenditures, eleven point five million with the utilities fund contributing seven million. And then the airport contributing four million, a lot of that through federal funding on the airport improvement program. And then finally, acknowledgements. I do wanna, I do wanna thank the Audit Committee, Mayor Warren and Linda and Broderick, who sat through about an hour of our presentation so you wouldn't have to today. And as Kedrick said, we just had really just good discussion about our audit and the progress that we made and just the discussions that we had with staff about, you know, some value-added improvements that you'll be hearing about, hopefully in the future, related to capitalization policies, things of that nature. And then, again, City Manager Ed, we had a good talk at the beginning of the audit and I wanna mention this to you because I think it's important that his charge to me and to our firm, he said, "We want to do everything with excellence as it relates to financial matters." And so I'm here to tell you, we're gonna keep you accountable to that standard and I feel like we have this year. And then finally, the Finance Department, I can't say enough about Kedrick and County Manager Lauren and just their team over there. Blake and Lynn and Karen and the rest of them just did a great job. We've got a good, good team over there. So that's it. That's all I have. I'm probably over the three-minute mark. But hopefully, said enough to... Any questions related to our presentation?
Any questions for Walter?
I'd just like to say I think you did a great job of audit this year. Felt very comfortable with the grants the city's gotten this year and so, great job.
Thank you.
You know, I also wanna say, Walter and A.J., the presentation you gave us as far as the Audit Committee was thorough and complete and it, I like the word when you use, it was Ed, the word excellent. And so this is really, it's transparent, it's clear, it's good. Just thank you guys for what you did. But also, Kedrick and Lauren, you guys are just awesome. You know, you, the Tyler motto of call to serve, I mean, you, you guys step up and do what it takes to make, make our city better. So, thank you guys as well. So, any other comments for Walter? We do need to take action to approve the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. So I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve P one.
Second.
Motion by Sellers, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. P two.
Okay, Mayor, Council. We have item P two before you. His request that City Council consider receiving a presentation on the opportunity to issue approximately twenty-eight million dollars in revenue bonds to facilitate regulatory compliance in the sewer system and provide general guidance to staff regarding authorization to proceed with this opportunity to issue revenue bonds. And we have Steven Adams here today and he's gonna go through a little bit more detailed presentation for us. But just to give you a little bit of a highlight, we had anticipated to spend about thirty-nine point seven million dollars this year on our compliance projects and about eleven point seven of that was gonna be covered with cash on hand. And just some of the things that these bond dollars will cover will be point repairs at various creek crossings, hydraulic model and capacity updates, and then five, five phases of gravity sewer improvements. So we're estimating that the bond issuance cost will be about a hundred and seventy thousand and we'll issue about twenty-eight million in bonds. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Steven at this point and he'll go through the presentation and if you all just give us some feedback and guidance on how to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Kedrick. Mayor, members of the council. Again, Steven Adams with Specialized Public Finance. And first I wanna say, I'm glad to be here in person. I understand my audio wasn't really clear at the last minute. I apologize for that. But it is good to be here. So if we cannot go to the next slide, please. So this is part of an overall program that the city is undertaking for regulatory compliance. I would like to remind everybody that, that there is a regulatory compliance fee that's paying debt service on these bonds. And among other things, that really helps out with the rating because you have a dedicated source of money that exactly matches the upcoming needs. We've already gone through one rating presentation last year for the start of all of this program and the rating agencies are aware of the size of this program and you maintain your rating. We don't expect any changes in that. And as you can see, this year, the first, I call tranche of these bonds, the twenty-eight million will be issued and then potentially in October, depending on how the projects come along, we'll come back with another forty-four million. And then, as you can see, between twenty-two and twenty-six, we will fund the rest of these. These will probably change over time as we get better bid parameters in. Hopefully, they will come down. There's also cash used every year as tile, as Kedrick pointed out, that this year there's also cash going in. We're doing that every year in the amount that's possible, the most possible to reduces the debt as much as we can. We've used a two point five one percent interest rate that has twenty-five basis points of cushion in it. So we hopefully will come in lower than that and that should also help your rates. And with any luck, the rates will hold out with us throughout the term of these debt issuances. Next page. This is a graph of all of your debt and the available revenues. And you can see that with the regulatory compliance based on the performance that have been put together by Kedrick and Jim and others at the city staff that, that we do have significant revenues, sufficient revenues to repay the debt and also have room for more debt in the future if other, other growth items or other, other debt issuances are needed for, for other things. And so, this is, of course, one of the reasons that you have the high rating that you have and this also the revenues here do include that, the charge for the debt for the regulatory compliance. Next page. The particular debt that we're asking you to allow us to move forward with today will have level debt service between now and twenty fifty-one. And again, we expect it to be around two and a half percent, hopefully below that. We will have twenty-eight million dollars to the construction fund and we estimate the cost of issuance to be approximately a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Next page, please. And this is just the sources and uses which, which goes over what I just talked about, the twenty-eight million to the construction fund plus the cost of issuance. Now those costs of issuance pay our firm, they pay the bond lawyer, they pay the rating fees. Attorney General has a fee because they have to review all debt that's issued by any political subdivision in the state and, and send other banking fees and various charges associated with the bonds. And finally, next page, two more pages. Just kinda let you know where the interest rates are. They, they, they're, they've gone up a little bit. You can see on the far right where that graph comes up a little bit. But they're still very low if you look at historical rates. So, by our graph, you know, they're, they're lower now than they've been ninety-three percent of the time in the last ten years. So, very low rates and, and hopefully they will remain there throughout the term of our issuing these bonds. And then finally, last page. If you do allow us to move ahead, what we would do is go through the rating process, get the bonds put together. Come back to you on April the twenty-seventh. We would take bids the day before, competitive bids. So we won't know the actual rate until the day before. The firms that bid on these bonds won't bid until as close to the actual meeting as possible. So we would take those bids the afternoon of the twenty-seventh, come to you on April the twenty-eighth with an offer to purchase your bonds from the winning bidder. And then if you accept that offer, then the documents will all be sent off to the Attorney General after they're signed. They'll be approved by the Attorney General. That's approximately a one-month process. And we will close on May the twenty-seventh. And that is all I have. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Steven? Good job.
Thank you.
Move to approve at P two.
I'm sorry.
Motion by Westbrook, second by McGee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Zoning item, Z one, Kyle.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. This first request is a zone change from RMF, multi-family residential, to R one D, single-family attached and detached residential district. The applicant plans to rezone this property to develop three additional single-family homes on the property. It's currently zoned for multi-family and the properties, the surrounding properties are all zoned for multi-family use but are generally developed with single-family homes. This request would amend the future land use guide from a single-family medium-low density to single-family medium attach, or single-family, single-family attached. The applicant, again, plans to subdivide the property to develop three additional homes, detached, single-family homes. And this would help implement the Tyler first goal of adding three thousand additional rooftops to the north end. This, this property is in the Tyler north end and also is in Council District number two. Of the seventeen notices that were sent out, zero were returned in favor or in opposition to the request. The plan that is only commissioned by a seven-zero vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle? I don't have any cards on this item, so I'll entertain a motion. A motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z two.
This is a zone change request from C two, general commercial district, to R one A, single-family residential district. The, the applicant's requesting the zone change to build single-family homes, much like the, the properties to the north. The, to the north are currently undeveloped with, but zoned R one B for single-family. To the east and west are zoned for commercial use and multi-family use and are actually developed with single-family homes. And then the properties to the south, across Chandler Highway, are currently zoned R one A and are for single-family homes. This request would amend the future land use guide from neighborhood commercial to single-family medium-low density. The applicant does plan to subdivide this property into three lots and with the two lots to the north being for residential use and then the remainder being for commercial use along Chandler Highway. Of the nine notices that were sent, zero were returned in favor or in opposition to the request. The plan that is only commissioned by a seven-zero vote recommends approval.
Any questions for Kyle? Because I know I didn't say this earlier. Somebody calls in, will you let us know?
Sure.
I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z three.
This next request is a zone change from C two, general commercial district, to RMF, multi-family residential district. This is in City Council District, District number three. This is up near I twenty, along James Farren Parkway. The applicant plans to rezone this property to build a, an apartment complex. The surrounding properties to the north, south, and west are zoned for commercial use but are currently undeveloped. And the properties to the east are located outside the Tyler city limits. This request would amend the future land use guide from general commercial to multi-family. The apartment complex is planned at a density or maximum density of twenty-four units per acre. As compared to the, there is a existing complex to the south for sage meadows and this would be similar to that. The, of the notices that were sent, we did receive one in opposition from a neighbor that's, that has property outside the city limits. As a courtesy, we, we do notify property owners outside the city limits. And they were, their main concern was the, the impact to the, to James Farren Parkway. This is a, we, we do have a rendering of the, the development and it does show access internal. There are gonna be future streets to the north in that commercial area. And then also, ten acres of the multi-family is typically less intense than ten acres of commercial property in terms of traffic if it were retail or restaurant. So, of the, again, of the notices, we did receive one in opposition. And the plan that is only commissioned by a seven-zero vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle? You know, I will say that, that I think this is kinda fun to have this zone for multi-family up by I twenty and just have that area that was annexed actually get, get built up. So, be out there by Chick-fil-A and kind of a funnel area. So... I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion by McKeller, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z four.
This next request is a zone change from DBAC, Downtown Business Arts and Culture District, to PMXD two, planned mixed-use district. And this is in City Council District number two. The request is to adopt a final site plan to allow for a high-density apartment unit complex with retail and commercial space. So a mixed, mixed-use development, which is typically what we encourage in the downtown area. And so, the, the properties to the north are zoned DBAC. It's currently undeveloped. The properties to the east are also zoned DBAC and developed with a, I believe, a, a auto garage. And then there's also townhomes being developed to the, to the east. And this is kind of in association with that development. And then to the west and south are currently zoned M one for light industrial but are currently developed with commercial use. The request is consistent with the future land use guide identifying the property as high-density mixed-use. The applicant is proposing to develop apartment units with a maximum density of a hundred and fifty units per acre along with rental or retail, commercial, and office space on the first floor. We do have some renderings of the proposed building. The, the site plan proposes ninety-five residential units in, in association with the, the mixed-use component. And generally, the, the development is consistent with the downtown business arts and culture district standards. So it's essentially, it's consistent with the DBAC standards but it does have a site plan that establishes that the development will be mixed-use and not single-use. And so, we do have, we kinda flip through it here. Yeah, renderings of the, the development there is on the corner. And it will have underground parking garage on, on the first floor. And, and we do have the applicant here if there's any questions on, on the project. Of the twenty-seven notices that we sent, zero were returned in favor or in opposition to the request. And the plan that is only commissioned by a seven-zero vote recommends approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
I do. Kyle, this doesn't change the boundary of the DBAC. This just simply changes the zoning for this particular property.
Just for this property, yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I've got a question, or a card here from Mr. Hershey. Any questions for Mr. Hershey on this? Once again, that whole area is, to see Mr. Hershey's first project going up and then seeing the other project and seeing the concrete get busted up over here across the street and then seeing Mr. Hershey's next project, it, it, it really is kinda just amazing that, that this end of, of almost the second square is getting developed like this. So, it's a, it's an exciting part of the future of downtown. So, I'm really encouraged by it. Entertain a motion. Motion by McGee, second by Sellers. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z five.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
These are part of our biannual UDC, our Unified Development Code, updates that we do. And I'll go over some of the more substantial and then we have some clarification items. The first item is for projected image signs. So, essentially, projected image signs are signs that are typically projected at night. And if we go back to the previous slide. And you, you can see the example there under the Austin Bank. That's a, a, a local example of when the Census Bureau actually projected a sign onto the bank. And what we're asking for is to incorporate this type of signage into our sign code. They, with some restrictions. Primarily, you will see that we're recommending that we're requiring a special use permit, which is time-bound and it can be withdrawn, you know, should there be any issues. So we're, we're really trying to tiptoe into this avenue here so that we can pilot-project it essentially through the use of a special use permit to just make sure that, you know, we see what was expected in our community. And some of the restrictions would be that you would see projected image signs would be allowed for properties that have buildings at least four stories or forty feet in height. And that would also, again, have the special use permit and they can include condi- and that would also, again, have the special use permit and they can include conditions. Also, we would look at a minimum projected image sign would be restricted from being projected onto surfaces with high degrees of reflectivity like glass, you know, windows and other metal, polished metal features. The, the image shall hold for at least one minute and the projection shall not cross street or pedestrian pathways and the image may contain on or off-premise messaging. Our next update is for driveways in a railroad, railroad quiet zone. Railroad quiet zone is defined as an area where railroads have been directed to cease routine sounding of train horns while approaching public highway rail-grade crossings. So no commercial or industrial driveway may be constructed within 60 feet of a railroad gate arm within a defined railroad quiet zone. Our quiet zone for the downtown area is bounded from the area from West Elm Street to East Duncan Street. And so what we're making sure is that in that area, that we are making sure that we control those driveways so that there's no interference with the quiet zone and we can maintain our quiet zone and you don't hear those during the council meetings. And our next item is buffer yards and planned developments. As you can see here on the chart, PCD, our planned commercial district, it requires a buffer yard for C one, so a type B buffer yard for C one, which is the light commercial district. What we have encountered is that quite frequently we'll have a PCD come through that is restricted to C one standards. So in the, in those scenarios, we want to make sure that we are doing like-for-like. So if we have a PCD and they're restricted to C one, then they don't have to install a buffer yard that is next to a C one. So it's like-for-like. So if it's a C two type PCD and it's next to a C two, it would be like-for-like. If it's a C two PCD and it's next to a C one, then yes, they need a buffer, but not for like-for-like. So it's just kind of a common sense cleanup item there. And then our next item is for solar panel screening. The UDC requires that solar panel installations be screened from public view from streets. This would allow rooftop installations on the rear of the home if it is not facing a street. However, it would prevent homes with south-facing roofs along the street. Installations on south-facing roof maximizes solar access. As you know, as solar panel technology has changed, the, you can see some examples here of where, you know, the solar panels were more bulky in the past and they now are becoming more flush and even, there's some examples of even more flush than what you're seeing here. They're starting to create them where they're the size of a roof tile or the consistency or look of. And the solar, you know, the technology has changed. It's being proposed to amend the UDC that the screening requirement does not apply to any rooftop solar panels that are flush with the roof and run parallel to the roof's pitch. Now, in looking and vetting this through the various committees, we did have questions about this as far as the pitch and we had questions about how this would be applied in historic districts. And for any home that is a landmark or located within a local historic district, they would have to go through the certificate of appropriateness process because the standard for installing solar panels or anything on your roof, anything that would detract from the architectural features of the home from the street, those things have to go through that process. So they have to be vetted through. They would go through the historic preservation board and possibly seen by the city council. So again, it has to be seen from the street. So for example, if a landmark property wanted to install solar panels in their backyard and it's flush mount, you know, or, or not because it's screened, you can't see it from the street, then that would be allowed. But if you can see it from the street, those, those are things that would have to go through the COA process.
That's just if your house is a landmark?
Or if you're in a local historic district, which we have two, Heritage number one and Heritage number two. Number one is located within the, it's almost Brick Streets and Azalea. And then the Heritage number two is in the Charmwood district. And then some other clarifications. We have a reference to chapter six, which you'll hear more about during this council meeting, but it has to do with retaining walls. And we're simply updating our code reference to be consistent with the chapter six reference to retaining walls so that in the future, there's no confusion. And then to wrap these up, we have a vehicle definition. We discovered we didn't have a true vehicle definition in our definitions. We only referred to recreational vehicles and vehicles that were on track. So we want to make sure that we actually define a vehicle. And then the recommendations were presented to the Unified Development Code Review Committee on January 27th, as well as the Developers' Roundtable on February 11th. The Main Street Board received a presentation on February 25th as it relates to the projected signs in the downtown, limited to the downtown business arts and culture district. And all groups are in general consensus and the planning and zoning by a seven-zero vote recommends approval.
I got a couple of questions.
Me too.
Let me start with, with the railroad deal. So the driveways have to be 60 feet away.
Yes.
But the ones that are currently there that are not 60 feet away, are they grandfathered in?
Well, the, any, any driveways that we see along that corridor right there with, with the quiet zone, those are, have been deemed okay because they, the railroad really looks at those. And in fact, there's been one or two times where they discovered some newer driveways that were installed and, and they, for a time, shut down the quiet zone and that's why you were hearing the horns again. So this is making sure moving forward that we're very cognizant about those new driveway installations and that they're not out of compliance with the standard.
In fact, at least one, if not two, different businesses did modify their driveways in order to, for the, for the quiet zone to be restored.
Okay, solar panels. I'm just going to use the Azalea district as an example. You can drive up College Chilton, many of those streets and you don't see any solar panels. I don't know if that's because they're on the back of the house or whatever, but you don't see them.
Right.
So does this ordinance give people the ability to put solar panels on the front of their house?
It does. It does. Right now, it, the ordinance requires shielding from the public street. And the real, the main change was, is that prior to this ordinance consideration, a lot of the solar panels, the technology was very bulky and it was an eyesore. Now, some may consider the new technology an eyesore, so that's perspective. But, so in the code, it prevented any, it, well, it required shielding basically from the street for any solar panel installation. This code request or modification would allow it to be in, in the front, basically visible from the street unless you're a landmark or in a, a local historic district. And of course, you're a landmark or in a local historic district because you, you chose to be.
I struggle with that.
I struggle with that too because I've had a lot of questions about that. So this committee that met and discussed it, can you share more with their thoughts about why they would allow it on the street side?
Well, I thi, I think it really had to do with the change in technology and there was still concern about making sure that there, there wasn't any kind of dramatic pitch to the solar panels, that they were flush mount with the roof. And that can, you know, can help with that detraction, if you will. Now, for, for this, it really has to do with, you know, making, I guess, full use of the solar panel, your installation of it, if you can have it on the south and the north, whatever, getting the most efficiency out of it. Now, if the council is hesitant about the, this, I guess, approach, there, we could go back and revisit it and look at maybe considering a special use permit to allow it in front yards for certain conditions. If, like, say, there's a situation on a property where it's heavily treed on one side of the lot and they can't take use of that installation on that side, and then a consideration of a special use permit on the other side.
So have the folks at G-Tar, has anybody talked to them, the Greater Tyler area realtors, to see if this is going to have an impact on, on home values or homes being bought or sold, having the?
No, no. But that could be something that we do.
So would it require an actual building permit? So if somebody builds a house or if somebody wants to add it to their house, does it require an actual permit for them to do it?
We have gotten inquiries about building permits for, for the solar panels to make sure that they're being consistent with the code.
I truly think this needs more study.
I agree.
Yes. And, and we can take those, that feedback and then we can vet it some more and find out some best practices.
Counselor, can we carve this out of the, make the motion to approve everything else but that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I've got one last question. The retaining wall deal, is that to do with the measuring of the retaining wall, the four foot, whether you measure it from the soil or from the beginning of the?
Right. And, and I think that Lisa will get into more detail about the actual measurement under the chapter six discussion, but previously, the, the chapter 10, the UDC, I think it specifically said four feet or greater, but we weren't referencing chapter six. So we want to make sure that we're on the exact same page as what we see in chapter six. So if chapter six were to change in the future, we're not in conflict with that.
Well, I think that the, the thing that's important to point out is, is when you think of Ashmore or you think of these different places where you've had a retaining wall built on top of a storm sewer that's over four foot, it's, it's going to require engineering and a stamp.
Exactly.
And at less than four feet, does not require engineering and a stamp. So maybe this will help.
It should, yeah, especially when, when you hear Lisa's presentation about how it's measured because that's really handled under the building code, chapter six. You'll see that this, this is really putting it more in perspective.
Mayor, I've got one more quick. Heather, on the image signs, for right now, it's DBAC only. If you meet the qualifications outside the DBAC zone, no go for now?
There, yes, this is only allowed in the DBAC zone because of the nature of DBAC. You know, it's supposed to be a full-service, you know, 24-hour type of district. It is unique to our community and that is the reason why it's limited to DBAC.
Will there be any requirements on the retaining walls about placing other structures on top of the retaining wall?
I think Lisa probably could get more to that.
And you have quite a few ordinances already in relationship to retaining walls because I want to make sure it's clear that you already required engineer's seal for anything over four feet for retaining wall. The question is the practice of measurement is what the Developers' Roundtable got into. And that's, is a separate item you'll have later on in your.
Oh, jumps a gun.
It's okay.
Got excited about retaining walls.
You're prepared and ready to go.
Yes.
So. I see you answered my solar panels and some of the earlier zoning.
I got caught up in the solar panels. Any other comments for Heather?
Move to approve Z five with the exception of sending the solar panels back to committee for further consideration.
Motion by Westbrook, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Heather. H one.
Good morning, Mayor and Council and the City Manager. My name is Vanessa Wade, Managing Director here at the City of Tyler. And I am before you today to discuss a substantial amendment to the CDBG Community Development Block Grant and Home Funding. The reason why we do substantial amendments is anytime we're going to have a change to the annual plan that we presented to HUD, whether we're changing funding sources, they're giving us new money, or we are moving funding from one project type, property and facilities, over to another project type, maybe cleanup or park improvements or something like that, then we have to do an amendment. And some of these amendments are considered substantial and some of them are considered minor, but the amendments that we have going on today are considered substantial. So I'm before you. So the amendments that we're going to be making this time is for program year 23 through 24 for our consolidated plan. We're going to add in a recapture resale provision and I'll discuss that a little bit further in my presentation. We are changing the annual plan for 2020 and for 2019 as we're adding money and funding to different projects that weren't previously or didn't have enough money funded there. And I'll also explain that. And then after we go through the public hearing piece, I'll ask that you make an approval. So what I'll do is I'll go through, well, Deborah, did we go ahead and open the public hearing?
Well, you want to do the presentation first and then do the public hearing. The mayor will open and close the public hearing.
As your manager says.
So you're going to give your presentation before I open it up?
Yes.
Yes. I just wanted to make sure I was in the proper order. Thank you, guys. I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. So then we'll accept the amendments. And so if we can go ahead and move forward through this, this is the regulation for conducting public hearings. While we do it, it's a regulatory item that comes through from HUD. We do have to have a public comment period, if you go to the next slide. We do have to have a public comment period of 30 days. Our 30 days began from February 6th to March 10th. Today is the public hearing during this council meeting and then we'll have council approval. We will then submit to HUD, but we did during the comment period have at least one, we had no one really question the substantial amendment. We did have one person to submit a new idea to add to the substantial amendment, but the idea wasn't quite all the way vetted. So we were not able to add it to our amendment today or to really consider it for our amendment, but I did tell that particular entity that if they completed the vetting of it and answered more questions, that we could consider adding them maybe in future annual plans. Next slide. Okay. So the proposed amendments are as follows. There's the first one, which is the resale recapture provision. So you all are aware that the City of Tyler in the past have gone into homes and said, we're going to repair your home and then we got there and maybe the home was in such substantial disrepair that we were not able to repair it, but we had to tear it down and rebuild it. Well, when we do that, we actually rebuild those homes for those individuals at no cost to them. But they sign a contract with the City of Tyler saying that they have to live in that house as a primary residence or they have to allow that house to be rented to a low to moderate income family for that use in order to qualify for the program. And they have to do that for at least 15 years. So the value of what we put into the house, let's say it's $150,000, each year, we would remove $10,000 so that they own, the lien amount is reduced by every year. Well, if they break that particular contract, they decide they want to sell the house and they've been in the house for seven years, then they owe the city $75,000 back as the recapture of the amount of money that we put in there. If a person dies, and this is where the new provision that we're adding to comes into place, if a person dies that's in the house, the family members or the heirs have an opportunity, if they were living in the house and a part of the original contract, to stay in the house and continue the recapture provision. If they were not living in the house with their low to moderate income, we take them through the application process, they have an opportunity to go into the house and continue with it. If they don't do that, then they also have the opportunity to buy out the contract lien. So again, mom, dad died at seven years, we're well-to-do, we don't want to live in it, we want to do what we want to do with it, so then we'll pay you the $75,000 back, city, so we can have our property. There are instances where nobody is an heir. So then the property reverts back to the city and that's where the resale provision comes in. It reverts back to the city and the city is required by HUD to sell it to a low or moderate income family. And so we didn't actually have that provision well-defined in our plan and this is going to well-defined it in our plan, okay? The next amendment is for adding additional funding, go back one, I'm sorry. The next amendment is for adding additional funding to the TJ Austin project. You all remember that Councilman Ed Moore wanted sidewalks going from Queen down to Franklin and from on Palace and then same on Moore to help the children at TJ Austin Elementary School to walk to school safely. They wrote him a letter, as we recall. We were able to complete that project, all but one block on Moore Street and it was the block just due south of the school, the first actual block you got to. and it was the block just due south of the school, the first actual block you got to. And the reason why we weren't able to complete it at that time is that the property owners had died. And the heirs to the property, on, to the property were not cooperative. They told us, they don't want the property, do what you want to do with the property, don't call us anymore. So we couldn't just do that, but we had to take it through an eminent domain process just to get enough to put the sidewalk in, complete the sidewalk. That process is coming near to an end. And so what we need to do is to go ahead and put additional funding into that project so that we will have enough money to go ahead and finish the project out. So that's what that particular amendment is for. And our next amendment, the next two are going to be for Hidden Palace. As we're going into Hidden Palace, we have put in the infrastructure, the street, we put in the water sewer taps, but there's going to be some additional costs associated with preparing the property for building. Um, I don't know if you've walked the land or not, but it's, it's quite ditchy and hilly in some areas. And so we're going to have to significantly build the land of, so we need to put additional money in for that. And then the next slide shows us how we're going to actually pay for the houses. So over the last, um, five years or so, since twenty-sixteen, we've not really been putting a lot of money into anything except for critical home repair. We've not been putting money into rebuilding or what I described earlier, installing a new home. And so we've been accumulating that money so that we would have enough money to actually do this entire subdivision. And so what we have accumulated there is about one point three million dollars. Um, and we'll have a presentation a little bit later on that the first phase of this project is going to cost us a little bit over like one point one million dollars that we're going to set aside, and then we'll sell houses for, to be exact. And then we'll be able to go into our phase two. But this is our seed money for being able to start this project and building the houses all at the same time, or at least seven at the same time. Um, next slide. Okay, so the next proposed amendment, if you may recall that Dustin was before you when we received money from the federal government for COVID, wherein we received about six hundred thousand dollars before, and we were able to use it to help supply food or help with utilities assistance, and he asked you guys to accept that money. Well, um, the federal government has issued us another payment of six hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, eight hundred, six hundred fifty-nine, eight seventy-five, to be used for COVID-related things. Now, one of the things that we can use it for is rental assistance. And you guys probably are aware that, um, many people have been on the moratorium as far as paying rent since at least last year at this time, March twenty-twenty. And so, um, the moratorium for eviction may or may not be lifted soon. But if it is lifted soon, there are going to be people that are needing help paying those back rents because they weren't able to pay those rents due to loss of employment or loss of income as related to COVID. And so what we're identifying is that the new money that we've received, along with some of the old funding that we didn't spend on utilities assistance, we moved into an account to be used for rental assistance for those that are needing assistance. Now, the county did get money for rental assistance, but we must keep in mind that the county's money is for the entire Smith County. This money will be specifically only for the City of Tyler residents. And so we feel that this is a good use of the funding. Now that we're not really looking at quarantining and not looking as much at PPE buying and things like that, that it would be a good use of our time and investment to assist our citizens that need assistance with rental assistance. Um, that's my presentation, are there any questions? Are there any questions?
How much is in, is going towards rental assistance?
All in all, it's going to end up being a little bit over a billion dollars.
Renissa, how does someone apply for the rental assistance?
Yes, we will, um, we will develop out a program. Right now, we're thinking about partnering with a subcontractor to do it, of course, where they'll just have to fill out an application, they'll have to prove COVID-related issues, they'll have to prove how much money they have, like you can't have ten thousand dollars sitting in the bank and ask for rental assistance. So they, they'll have to meet certain criteria, and once that's met, um, they'll request a check through the city, we'll go through our finance department, and we'll pay the landlord directly, um, for the back pay. We can't pay for future rent.
Right.
We can only pay for rent in the years.
And the moratorium is potentially going to be lifted March thirty-first on evictions?
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
So who monitors the rental assistance, Neighborhood Services?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, any other questions for Renissa before we move into a public hearing?
Yes, Ms. Renissa, I have a question.
Yes.
So thank you for your report. Where are we as far as putting our first house into Hidden Palace?
Very exciting news, that's going to be actually M five, um, but I'm thinking we're probably about sixty days out. Uh, once we get the contract approved, I was looking at the builder. Once we get the contract approved and getting all things set up, I'm thinking that we'll be looking at turning and putting hats down and things like that within the next sixty days.
Thank you.
So you're antsy like I am?
Yeah, I'm excited.
Yeah.
Okay.
So ready for M five, but we have to do this one first.
Okay, uh, let's go ahead and move into, uh, public hearing. Is there anybody out there that wants to speak to, uh, to this item? I don't have any cards on this item. I don't do the gavel, I can mark. Uh, Cassandra, anybody called in on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, we will now close the, uh, public hearing. And I believe we need to take action to approve the amendment, uh, for agenda item H one.
Move to approve.
Uh, motion by McKeller, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? H one carries. Stephen Thompson, welcome to the City of Tyler.
Thank you, sir, and good morning, Mayor, Councilmember, City Manager. Uh, just wanted to take a moment to briefly introduce myself as your new airport manager. As the mayor said, my name is Steve Thompson. I come to you from Denver, Colorado, and I can already report that Davis and I have experienced a very productive transition period over the past few weeks, and I'm very much committed to, to keep the inertia going on, on the great work that he's done at the airport over the past few decades. As Davis moves towards retirement in his current role as a consultant for the city and the airport, we've decided that Davis will see several issues through to completion that he has previously worked on. So having said that, we'll invite David Dixon up to cover the airport items, and I will be around for any further questions afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you.
So is this your last time to come up and speak?
I don't know.
I think he said that a couple of times before.
I need to be careful what I say, but.
Mr. Mayor, you don't want me to come back?
No, I love the man.
We have a few projects that are still kind of working through, so I may come back on occasion if you will answer some questions. But with this one, this is a, a new grant. You may recall last year, we had a similar grant for COVID relief for the airport. And it was just over one point two million dollars. And the airport has fully utilized this grant, and it's really been a real plus for us, especially during those slow times and added responsibilities with cleaning and disinfecting the building that we've done. So this one is a new one. This is the Perona Virus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. And it was funding that was allocated for airports and the help and the relief in response to the COVID-nineteen emergency. This, uh, grant is being requested today is for just about, let's see, one million, twenty thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars. Of course, as always, the application was something that was time-sensitive, and we really needed to act upon it to be successful with this grant. So we made the application, so we're asking for your consideration to ratify the application of it and grant authorization to accept the grant once it's received. And I can report that we've now received, I believe yesterday, for execution. So there's no local funding for it. It's basically to assist the airport in operational expenses, which includes salaries, added expenses that we've undertaken for, for COVID-related issues there to, as prevention in the airport. So this really helps in operating budget, kind of during those slow times that we're still experiencing in the airport. But, uh, we're seeing an uptick in activity, in fact, flights are back up to really pre-COVID levels far as with American Airlines. And I'm going to keep my fingers crossed that as, as the travel industry grows, we'll see more flights, maybe another airline, so. But in the meantime, I think, you know, this is something that's really good, explained in some great detail to our Airport Advisory Board earlier this week. And they unanimously recommended approval.
Are the boarding numbers up to where they were before COVID?
They're, they're not up to where they were before, and I tell you, February was kind of like, well, those pieces in there kind of affected that with all that weather. But I'm seeing, you know, a, a pretty good increase, especially going to five flights, that's a big, big help.
How many flights are there?
Five with Americans going out, five coming in. And as a side note, uh, some of the things that we've seen happen, let's see, within the past month, remember we've talked about the instrument landing system? And that was a big project that was included with that runway rehabilitation program. That was commissioned last month, so that helps even more than the reliability during COVID weather.
Cool. Uh, any other questions for Davis or for Steve? I'll entertain a motion to approve R one.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Wynn, second by Sellers. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? R one carries, R two.
And thi- this is, uh, similar in nature, only that it really addresses specifically concessions within the terminal buildings, such as restaurants, rental car companies. It's a smaller amount, it's twelve thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars, but it does give some relief on like rent, uh, and fees within a building for future grants and fees. It doesn't go back to the past. So it's restricted, though, just rooted to those internal, the commercial terminal concessions. And again, there's no local max.
And part of that goes to national rentals and then the other to refos?
Yes, the, the restaurant, the, the building.
But Davis, that's only for future rent.
That's, that's what we understand, just for the future, huh?
Any questions for Davis?
Move to approve R two.
Motion by Sellers, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One other mention, too, this does not affect, you probably heard that, compared to the airport improvement program, where that funds more like your, uh, construction, capital improvements, and acquisitions, things like with fire. This grant being accepted has no effect on the future of those grants. So the airport's eligible for those later in the, I think later in the summer, so we'll look forward to that.
Thank you. See you around.
Thank you, Steve, nice to see you.
Thank you, Steve. O one. Oh, this is retaining walls.
This is retaining walls. Um, if we could go to the next slide, please? So staff has been, uh, reviewing the C B G references regarding retaining walls. Can we go to the next slide, please? Here we go. And the requirements for the, uh, const- design and construction of retaining walls are, uh, outlined in Chapter Six and Chapter Ten. So the design of retaining walls are covered in six dash eleven A, six dash eleven B, and ten dash three thirty-one. Uh, the six eleven sections are for residential and commercial site plans. And as you can see in the column under current requirements, there are no specifications for when a retaining wall requires a design for residential site plans. The, uh, requirements on commercial site plans state that retaining walls that are equal to or greater than four feet in height require an engineered design. However, when you go down to Chapter Ten, and again, this section is applicable to all residential and commercial properties, it says that retaining walls that are, that exceed four feet in height require a design. So the problem here is that not only do these sections not actually specify how that four feet is going to be measured, there's actually a contradiction between the paragraph in six eleven B versus ten dash three thirty-one. So staff looked at the, uh, ordinances of a handful of other cities to see what other cities were doing, and we're actually recommending, uh, the language that's in that first box under the proposed requirements. So what that's going to do is actually add language that requires an engineered design under three circumstances. The first being any retaining wall that supports a building, driveway, or other imposed load that is within a certain distance of the wall. So that would actually, uh, cover the, the scenario where someone tried to build another wall or fence on top of that retaining wall. That situation would require an engineering, uh, an engineered design. Uh, the second circumstance is any retaining wall that is equal to or greater than four feet in height when measured from final grade to the top of the wall. And then the third is a scenario where you have multiple tiered walls, which are all within a certain distance of each other. Then when you look at the construction of the retaining walls, and these are circumstances where you would have to get a building permit to actually build that wall, those, uh, circumstances are covered by sections six point two and six dash one fifty-one, uh, which are the ordinances that, uh, uh, cover the International Building Code and the International Residential Code. Currently, those sections say that a, uh, building permit is required for walls that are equal to or greater than four feet when measured from the bottom of the footing to the top of the wall. And the proposed change is to make that measurement from, again, final grade to the top of the wall. So it would match that same scenario for when the design is required. So again, the section, uh, the changes in section ten dash three thirty-one, and the change that, that's being proposed is rather than having that language that requires, you know, how many feet or imposed loads or whatever, we just want to take that out of that section and put in language that refers to the, the more detailed language in Chapter Six, so that if we don't end up with this scenario in the future where it's changed in one section and not in the other, and then you end up with this contradiction again. But again, that, that change in ten dash three thirty-one was the item that was covered in item Z five. So this is a request only to, uh, excuse me. This is a request for amendments to section six dash two, six dash eleven, and six dash one fifty-one only. Thank you.
I'll let you drink your water first. You're fine. Oh, am I sure I got it right? So we're talking about measuring from the bottom of the retaining wall to the top of the retaining wall versus from ground level to the top of the retaining wall?
The, the exact opposite. What we're proposing is that the wall be measured from final grade, which is ground level to the top of the retaining wall, rather than the bottom of the footing. So this is actually going to give us more, more protection because a retaining wall that is four feet from grade to the top of the wall is clearly actually taller than that once you get underground and get it to that underground footing.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Lisa?
I just commend you for putting this wording in here. My first year on, on council was very stressful as relates to this, as you know, and I think this will prevent this in the future. I assume that anything currently built will be grandfathered?
Correct. Yes, thank you. Uh, Ms. Lisa, thank you for your report. I have a question, and that question is, when does it become the responsibility of the city to build a retaining wall when, uh, clients complain about water that's flowing from a branch down into their property? And it's been going on for several years now. And so I got two phone calls yesterday in regards to that. So I wanted to find out, when does it become our responsibility to build a retaining wall to protect their property? to protect their property?
It, it's really up to the discretion of the city. City, there is a city ordinance that allows for city participation for projects such as that on private property, but the ordinance is very clear that it's dependent on the availability of funds. And one of the issues that the city has when we do those types of projects is that it make, then makes the city forever responsible for the function of that wall, for the future maintenance of that wall. And it, and it puts us in a precarious position with regards to liability. So generally, the city should not be participating in those projects. But again, it really depends on the scenario. I mean, there are situations where the proposed wall would just be so, it would be such a hardship for that property owner that, you know, the city will take on that responsibility.
Any other questions for Lisa? All right, I'll entertain a motion for O one.
Move to approve O one.
Second.
A motion by Curtis, second by Sellers. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M one, Lisa.
This is a request for an engineering contract with Aquius Engineering for the Holly Park Drainage Improvements Project. This is one of the areas that was identified in the 2016 Drainage CIP Strategy as an area that needed to be studied because the city had received multiple complaints of flooding. So a preliminary engineering study was performed by Aquius Engineering, and now it's just time to move into the design phase of this project. Aquius recommended that we replace an existing undersized storm sewer inlet and pipe and then on Bed, Bedford Court, and then construct additional inlets and storm sewer pipes along Holly Creek Drive from Silver Maple to Bedford Court. So again, this is a request for this engineering contract in the amount of twenty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Any questions for Lisa? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Wynn, second by Sellers. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M two.
Item N two is a request for an engineering contract with Adams Engineering for design, construction, management, and construction inspection for the repair of four separate drainage structures located throughout the city. And if we could go to the next slide, please? These four locations are, next slide to the maps. These four locations were areas that were identified by our stormwater staff just during regular inspection activities, and we had four separate locations. And just due to the proximity, we thought it would be expedient to group them all together so that they would be designed, bid, and constructed as a single project. Can we go back to the first map slide, please? The first location that we're looking at is a thirty-inch pipe and head wall that is just off the dead end of Divine Street west of Pinkerton. The thirty-inch pipe is currently broken. This is the picture that is to the right of the map. There's a, you can see the hole right by the head wall area. That hole in that pipe has caused an enormous amount of erosion both around that pipe and around the head wall and underneath the head wall. So the, the whole structure is really in danger of breaking off. And because it's located fairly close to Divine, we are afraid that it would eventually erode back underneath the street. The second issue is, again, another set of pipes and head wall, and this is on Golden Road immediately adjacent to the water, the water treatment plant. This location has actually a twenty-four inch pipe and a thirty-three inch pipe with a head wall. Both of those pipes are broken and have holes in them that have caused this erosion. And this, this particular head wall is actually within feet of Golden Road, so this is really in danger of causing damage to the road. Next slide, please? The third area that we're looking at is, again, this is the right-hand picture at the West Grande Channel. This is the open channel that runs along Grande just west of Broadway. And this channel is immediately adjacent to an apartment complex, and you can see that the, that at least one panel of the concrete lining is completely broken and slipping off of its location, which is putting the parking lot to that apartment complex in danger. And then the final location is a pipe and head wall system that comes underneath Market Square Boulevard behind the Cumberland Village Shopping Center down on South Broadway. So again, the pipe itself is not broken, but for some reason, we've had an enormous amount of erosion around and underneath that head wall. And that head wall is, it's, it's a really large structure, and it's just hanging off in midair right at the moment. So we need to get some repair done around that head wall. So again, just a request for an engineering contract with Adams Engineering. This would, again, cover the design, construction, management, and inspection for all four locations, and the amount is two hundred and fourteen thousand and ten dollars.
Any questions for Lisa?
I got a question. Lisa, you mentioned we found these in inspection process. What, what do we do? I mean, as a matter of routine for inspecting these drainage assets?
There's not a really well-developed routine maintenance plan. This is, a lot of these are, either we get phone calls complaining about erosion occurring around these structures, or it's just something that staff member would notice as they were driving by.
And my question has to deal with the Cumberland Village drainage issue. Shouldn't the developer be responsible for that? Just a question. I mean, they're still in the development phase, and looking at that map, it's on that southeast corner of that development.
It is, but this particular structure has been in place for long enough that the warranty period is, is, has ended. And actually, the area that's immediately around this head wall is actually within a city easement, and it makes it the city's responsibility.
Okay, thank you.
So what is that warranty period where the city accepts a responsibility?
Generally, it's one year.
Is that by ordinance or just by?
I, I think there is an ordinance that covers that, but that's, that's just standard practice.
Okay.
Thank you.
I move to approve M one.
Motion by Westbrook, second by Curtis. This, the motion was approved.
M two.
M two, correct?
M two, excuse me.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M three.
Okay. Item N three is also a request for an engineering contract with Adams Engineering for the Stagecoach Drainage Improvements Project. And again, this is one of those areas that was identified in that 2016 Drainage CIP Strategy. So a preliminary engineering study has been done of this area that is south of Shiloh Road between, I believe, Kings Park and then Regency Lane. So Adams Engineering did the preliminary engineering study and recommends basically the installation of a parallel drainage system. The current system is a combination of both open channels and underground pipes, but it basically runs between all of the houses from north to south. And so what Adams is proposing is to build an inlet and pipe system along Stagecoach Drive so that it's, A, within the right-of-way and would keep us from having to do all of the construction within these private properties. And it will direct the water away from that existing system so that the system that's in the roadway will be taking the bulk of the water, and then the existing system that will remain will just be handling the water that's generated within those particular yards. And then in addition to that, we've also had multiple complaints of flooding in this area off Downing Street, which is just north of Shiloh Road and northeast of this defined study area. So again, just for expediencing, we've decided to add that area to this project so that it will also be studied and a solution be, will be recommended, and the design of that will be handled along with the design for the Stagecoach area.
Any questions for Lisa?
I do, Lisa. The, the new, the proposed system, is it under the street? How is that, how's that gonna work?
Yes, sir. It would be built along Stagecoach Drive. So it'll just be storm inlets, you know, curb inlets and underground pipes.
Okay.
This shouldn't be very much fun to spend money on this kind of stuff. I know we need, I know we need to. I'll entertain a motion on M three.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? M three carries. M four.
Item N four is a request for a construction contract with Reynolds &amp; Pay for the 2021 Seal Coat Program. Again, this is one of those annual projects that we do as part of our pavement enhancement program. Seal Coat is a process where we put down a, an asphalt binder material and then cover it with an aggregate, basically rocks. And this is seals the street from water intrusion as well as just prolonging the life of the existing asphalt. So this project is, will seal approximately twenty-five lane miles throughout the city, and the cost of the contract is eight hundred forty-five thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents.
I do have a question, Lisa. When it comes to roads that are listed in this project, let's talk specifically Reed Road. I know that it's, it rates being seal-coated, but the road really needs to be widened, and then that would update the road. So can we pull a road from a project and then have it considered in half-sent for widening? Or how do we, what's the process for that?
We can do that, but I wouldn't recommend pulling the seal coat from Reed Road just because of the length of, of time of getting the widening project worked into the program. And, you know, it may not be funded for a couple of years, and then when it was funded, it would take a couple of years to get the design complete. And so you'd be looking at many years out before the road is actually fully widened and complete. So you still need the seal coat now to prolong that pavement life until the widening project was able to be completed.
I would agree with Bob. That road has become a cut through to UT off Grande and a lot of the city, and it's really dangerous. I've traveled at several occasions, and when you come to the end of it to turn right, there's a hole that frightens me every time I turn there.
That's right.
Bobby, you must have experienced that. You're out in that area, too.
So what road are we talking about? Reed?
Reed Road.
Oh, Reed.
Yeah. It, it runs from Shiloh to County Road, what, twenty-two something? Yeah.
So is Reed Road even, is that, widening that even on the CIP project list?
It's currently not scheduled in the ten-year forecast, but I'm not sure whether it's in the program for some point beyond the ten years. I'll have to check that. And if it is in the program, we can reprioritize it so that it moves up. If it's not, we can add it to the program and get it ranked and prioritized.
Well, also too, there's a piece of that that is Shiloh Road where it turns south and goes, intersects with Reed Road that is on the CIP program to be reconstructed. So I, you know, I just hate to spend that money when there's really more modification, more deep modifications that need to be made for construction with those two roadways, but.
Well, but the difficulty is with the Reed is you're gonna, if you don't do the action this year, you're not gonna be able to rebuild it or improve it for probably three to four years. So in those four years, it will deteriorate to, I mean, already, I've heard Councilman Sullivan mention she's concerned about a huge hole that's there already.
Right.
I mean, it's going to get in worse condition.
Okay, thank you.
The, the structure itself seems, and help me with this, Bob, seems okay. It's that the volume of traffic on that road and turning off that road is the dangerous part.
It's the width. And the edge of the roadway is starting to crumble off because people are going off on the shoulder to avoid an accident with an oncoming vehicle. And so basically, that really appears to be what needs to be done, but.
Yeah, it was never intended for that much traffic.
No.
It's a whole country road that probably the county built, or was built with county standards. Same issue you have with, as far as Cumberland. I mean, that's gonna be, I mean, East Cumberland was built that same way, and that's actually, it's ranking currently higher priority for expansion and building. But it's definitely, we can look at the traffic piece on there. You know, there's been discussions in the past about, especially in relationship to Reed, of you start to close off part of that road. Because if the difficulty is it's a cut through, and it's obviously not designed as a cut through. You actually then just limit or stop traffic from being able to cut through and cut it off there so that they can't use that. Ultimately, it's a one-way in, one-way out type of street. So those are options as well, especially specifically on Reed.
And it's not vehicular traffic primarily that's causing the degradation of the shoulder of the road. It's the eighteen-wheelers that are coming in the backside to that industrial park there also. Can we have half-sent take a look at those two? I know that the meeting's coming up first of April, so.
Certainly.
I agree with Bob. Rather than putting good money after bad money, I mean, I don't think it's gonna solve the issue at this point in time. Do you agree, Bob?
Thank you, I do.
I don't, how do you, how do you pull a road off of item that's already been bid?
If council doesn't want us to read Road, we can take Reed Road out. Mind you, if they won't do it again till next year.
I don't know about.
Not gonna do it any favors, I mean, that's recode.
If you pull it.
It's just gonna keep getting worse.
But if you pull it, it means it's gonna get nothing.
I guess I probably don't wanna pull it then, but it seems like we're throwing good money after.
You're, you're not. You're only, I mean, it's, you're, you're, right now, you have a road that is in, what was it ranked? Forty-seven? On, yeah, it has a PCI rating of forty-seven. That means that it is in very bad condition. Again, you aren't, even if the count, the half-sent board recommends to council, and councilman says, let's do expansion, you're not going to be able to do expansion just because of engineering and right-of-way acquisition and everything else for probably, and then construction, that's a five-year project. So if it's already at a forty-seven, in five years, if you don't spend any money doing any action on it, it's going to be much worse. Especially once you get to this point, they deteriorate very quickly.
I think it's to push, push it up and get it done sooner or later.
Okay.
So Mr. Curtis, is that a motion?
That is a motion to approve.
A motion by Curtis, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? M four carries. M five, Shirley's favorite item.
I'm a little bit more excited than that. Good morning again, Mary, Council City Manager. I am before you today with some very exciting news, at least in my opinion, exciting news. The City of Tyler has gone out to bid on February ninth. The city of Tyler has gone out to bid on February 9th of 2021, or we actually opened bids on February 9th, 2021, for the construction of the homes at the Hidden Palace new subdivision. We received three bids, one from Anderco that bid 148 for the actual structure, but did not actually list what the GCP would be. We've received a bid from Mac Alpine for 140,000. I can't see behind that theme, but it was 140,000 or so. And the total price with the GCP was 168. And then we had Henry Homes that built 105 and with the GCP was going to be 120. As we started looking at the bids, we looked at several criteria, which is architectural and design, the cost of the construction, the amenities that were being provided, as well as the experience that was being brought to the table. We had pre-construction meetings or pre-bid meetings with each of the bidders. We have post-bid meetings with the bidders. And at our post-bid meetings, we were able to ask them additional questions about how they're going to conduct construction, about what they saw as pitfalls and obstacles with the property, and how they were going to actually lay everything out. And as we were going through those things, we really realized that two builders emerged, and that was Henry's and Mac Alpine. And between the two of those builders, we discovered that Mac Alpine had the better architectural design, had the better experience and had the better plan for what we needed for our property and was also familiar with the type of community that we were wanting to build over there. And is actually interested in building that type of community again in Tyler in another area. So this is going to be the flagship of that type of community. The designs that were presented by Mac Alpine is a craftsman-style house. And that's the little house right there before you, as well as it will not have an attached garage but a carport. And the next slide, please, will show you the design of that. So all the homes will be facing each other. And so when you pull into Eris, you'll see the back of the homes, which will have a small fencing like that, as well as that, if you go back one slide, please, will have a small fencing like kind of what you see here and have the carport there, which is going to be in keeping with the home. If you go to the next slide, you'll see the courtyard is going to be in the common area and how the houses will be facing each other. And they will have a sidewalk to go around the courtyard area. I'd like to go ahead and call Josh, Josh Chef. He also has his lovely white with him. I think you have the materials, so someone's wondering that as well. I'd like to go ahead and call him up and allow him the opportunity to kind of walk you through his concept of what he wants to do with this home and then his wife will probably show you the materials. That's what he said.
Good morning. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Name and address?
Mm-hmm.
Josh McAlpine's 210 Madison Court, White House, Texas, 75791.
Thank you.
So the concept we were familiar with, I actually put a contract on a house or a piece of property in White House, a 4.5 acres, that we were going to develop this exact style of community. It's called a pocket community. And it was coined by an architect out of Washington, Oregon, and his name is Ross Chapman. And he actually came out with a book and put it all together. He's done it probably 14 years ago, 15 years ago. And it's kind of taken off a little bit, not real big, but it's starting to take off. And we found that and fell in love with it. So we went into contract on this property and almost got it. Got to the development stage of it, and there was a big pipeline, the sewer line right through the center, so we had to scratch it. And then I got a phone call from Ms. Faith, actually, on, through the city neighborhood services about developing or building a homes or property like this. So as soon as she told my wife and I exactly what it was, we were real excited because this is exactly what we were going to do. So our, our design idea is to make it, it's supposed to be community-based. And that's exactly what we were excited about. It's a smaller lot, smaller homes, and they become affordable. It's, it was geared towards the, you know, moderate-to-income type housing or empty nester, first-time home buyers, even a little bit of second-time home buyers. They're smaller homes, they're 1,300 square foot. And we're going to put the amenities, we're going to be using quartz, all high-end Delta stuff. It's going to be a very, very nice home. And we're really excited, super excited about it.
When, when I looked through the package, there were, you know, different companies and different bids and so forth. And I'd asked staff for backup on, on your bid process. And when I read the, the communication, it, it talked about how you were going to do sidewalks and, and how you were going to do everything. And from my perspective, it really did become really superior to the other bidders based on quality and, and things that you were doing that, that really were creative and exciting. And I think this project is one that if we're trying to do something in North Tyler that is going to be contagious, that you want to really build the 3,000 rooftops, you've really got to have something like this to, to, to jumpstart, something that maybe has not already been jump-started. So I, I like the, I like the product and, and are y'all going to, I feel like Shark Tank. So are you going to talk about what you have here?
Sure. I can actually, I, I was, I got the easy part of the construction. My wife is actually the design side, which is the very difficult part. So I'd probably prefer her to go through the design side and give her ideas as to exactly what it's going to be.
Come on, you're going to come up here to the microphone. And I don't need your rec, your name, I don't need your address. I assume y'all live together.
Okay, my name is Ann McAlpine.
All right.
Basically, what we wanted to provide is someone's dream home that they may not be able to get any other way. So we weren't really wanting to skimp on finishes. We wanted to provide the best for the price. So what we're going to do is do the vinyl flooring that you see, I'm going to go show this one. On the end, that's going to be throughout the house, except for the mudroom and laundry room, which is going to be the darker gray, 12 by 24 tile. And in the kitchen, we're going to do quartz countertops, the nice backsplash that you see, painted cabinets, polished nickel, Delta faucet in the kitchen, farmhouse sink, we're going to have a desk area. It's a nice little china cabinet-type hutch that's going to be built in. And then in the bathrooms, we're going to do the master bathroom. Have y'all seen the floor plan?
No, but Vanna, Vanna, can you kind of show, put your hands on the...
Yes, Vanna. The kitchen's going to have an island, I don't know if I mentioned that, but the island's going to be a separate marble-type look quartz. And then the surround is going to be the Arctic white. We want to make it classic. These people that are purchasing this home, they want to live in it for, I think, 15-plus years. That's the condition. So we wanted it to be not super trendy, but timeless. It's still going to look great 15 years from now. But what I was saying about the master bathroom is that we're going to provide a water room in this master bath, which is kind of a new concept where the bathtub and the shower share a tiled-in space. And so we're going to do that lighter gray, 12 by 24, around the wall. And then we're going to do the little hex on the floor, which is a marble-type look. It's going to be, it's freestanding tub, it's going to be polished nickel faucets in there also. And we're going to do quartz countertops also in the bathroom. And it'll be vinyl flooring in the main area of the bathroom. And I don't miss anything. I think that's it for the most part. But we want to make it appealing to the masses, basically. And every house will be a little bit, maybe a slightly different paint color, maybe a slightly different countertop, different lighting fixtures, you know, to kind of make it look different from one from the other, but still the same feel.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. and Mrs. McAlpine?
We're excited to get started.
I'm sorry?
We're excited to get started.
We're so excited, yes. We, we really strive to do everything in excellence, and we loved hearing that from you guys at the beginning. So we hope that everyone is just thrilled with this project at the end.
Cool. I'll entertain a motion.
Actually, I have a little...
Oh, you did?
But if you want to...
No, 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 no.
You're about to get approval.
Don't mess it up, though.
Stand in the way.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Okay. Well, I wanted to make sure that you, more so for those that are interested in affordability period, you did see that the home is 168. That still is considered affordable for a load of moderate income, but we also know that we're seeing fluctuating prices in building materials. And the lumber and various things that the Mac Alpines received quotes on, the lumberyard was only able to hold that quote for a couple of days. And so as we go into this, we may see the price of the house actually increase or decrease depending upon how we can make some things work. But I wanted to reassure you that these people that will qualify for this home, if they're load of moderate income, which we would have to sell to them, they also qualify for our first-time home buyers program, which means they could get up to $25,000 off, or towards closing costs off the price of the house, which would bring it from the 168 down to 143. So that makes it a little bit more affordable for the people that are getting ready to go in there when they're trying to mortgage the home. We're also working with Bancorp South and some other makers to help to secure loans ahead of time for people that would be interested in going into this particular property. So we're encouraging anybody that thinks that they would like to have a home in Hidden Palace to go ahead and start calling us now so that we can go ahead and get them approved through the application process and get them ready so that when the houses hit the ground, they may can participate with the Mac Alpines on finishes and colors or what have you for their particular home. But with that, I'll ask that the city council accept this presentation and approve the Mac Alpines as the bidder to be awarded to build the property over in Hidden Palace.
Move to approve M five.
Second.
A motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion?
Just one question, Mr. Mayor. What's the timeline after we say yes to...
Six months.
Six months.
Well, oh, I'm sorry. Give me a couple of months to get the contracts and all that stuff done, but we're thinking that the houses should be able to be built in six months.
Okay.
Right?
The first thing is, that's first, the first seven houses, and then once we're sold, we'll move to the next four.
Okay. All right, we got a motion in a second. Okay, go ahead.
Just one, so the entrance of this subdivision will be from Queen Street?
Queen and Palace. So you'll be able to enter off of Palace, right by the fire station, or you can go around the Queen and enter. The main, most beautiful entrance is off Queen. If you've been over, there is a small island there. We have brick inlay to honor Tyler to come into the neighborhood. But the other entrance is also available.
So their addresses will be Queen Street?
Eris. The street is named Eris, and so...
Eris.
Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck with your project. Thanks for what you're doing. Excited about it.
Yes, I'm clear with that.
Lisa, M six.
Okay. Item M six is a request for a construction contract for the repair of the Shiloh Road This was a project that was designed by Elige Engineering. This is the repair of the concrete-lined portion of the channel that runs underneath Shiloh Road, just east of Donnybrook. This is where the trails for the two parks go underneath the road. That concrete channel has become broken and separated, the bottom from the sidewalls, and is in danger of undermining the channel and the bridge itself holding up Shiloh Road. So the design was completed late last year. The project was publicly advertised. We had 11 bidders on this project. And Highway 19 Construction LLC was the low bidder at $286,600.
Have they done business with the city before?
No, sir, they haven't. But we did a really good reference check on them, and they've, they've come really highly recommended.
They're on our approved bidder list?
No, sir, they're not currently on our approved bidder list. But again, we did check their references. They submitted the same qualification statement that our approved bidders do, and we went through it and checked their references and everything checked out okay.
How many bids were there? How many is that?
11 bids.
I like that. It makes it more competitive. Any other questions for Lisa?
No, I just want to make a point that in, in the past that we've held to that standard, that contractors need to be on our approved bidder list. And I'd like for us to either revise our, our policy or hold to that. That's all.
Okay.
Move to approve M six.
A motion by Curtis, second by McGee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
M seven.
Good morning. I'm Tiffany Curry, project engineer at Tyler Water Utilities, and I am here to present item M seven, which is the Group Three Manhole Rehabilitation Construction Contract. This is one of the four Group Three packages. A lot of this will be reviewed from last month. The manhole rehabilitation package will include raising, realigning, sealing covers, coating manholes. Group Three also includes a gravity main rehabilitation package, which you approved the construction contract last month for that, a 54-inch diameter CIPP project, and a 24- to 42-inch diameter CIPP project. Both of those you'll see in the next few months. Quick overview refresher for you of the schedule of what the manhole rehabilitation work has looked like in 2019 is when Pipeline Analysis did the condition assessment. Then the first half of 2020 is when the remedial measures plan was implemented, put into place and designed, and submitted to EPA. And then the second half of 2020 is when we started design. Construction for this is to be complete by the end of 2022. Okay. So this particular package includes specialty as well as traditional manhole work, raising manhole lids, liners, as I mentioned a few seconds ago, coating manholes, as well as traditional manhole work. The package includes just over 1,000 sanitary sewer manholes, as well as almost 400 cleanups to be installed in the system. The contract time is 360 calendar days, so we anticipate a completion date of May 2022. We received 10 bids for this project in early February. The low bidder was Lopez Utilities Contractor with $1,924,270 as his bid amount. And with that, it is our recommendation that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Lopez Utilities Contractor in the amount of $1,924,270 for the consent decree Group Three Manhole Rehabilitation Package.
Any questions of Tiffany?
I'll ask one question with regard to the contractor also, too. They've done business with the city before, and are they on the approved bidder list?
Lopez has not worked directly with the city before. Similar to Lisa's project, we did check their references, partnered with KSA to call them, and they came very highly recommended. They did submit all of their guidelines and requirements that are required. They are a specialty contractor, so they are not on our standard utility contractor list.
Thank you.
Where is it located?
Houston.
So is this the strike bid or is this scoring?
Would you ask that?
Scoring, is it?
Oh, no, this was a low bid, competitive sealed bids.
And how many total bids?
10.
So once they, once Lopez does this work and it turns out great, what does it take for them to get on the approved list to where?
They just need to submit the credentials that they already have, and then it gets reviewed and they can get added to our standard list.
But they're bonded like everybody else and all that?
Absolutely.
So the, the rest of the city is minimal?
Absolutely, yes.
And my line of questioning is just to make sure that we don't have a double standard going for the requirements, because to pay for audits and that type of thing is 30,000, 40,000 dollars a year or more for these contractors to submit all of the required documents to be...
That is correct, yes, sir. And we're, they're, they're held to the exact same standard, that we're using the standard construction contract that requires all of that.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for M seven if there's no more questions.
Move to approve M seven.
Okay.
Motion by Westbrook, second by... Motion by Westbrook, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. M. 8.
Good morning, Mayor.
Tim.
Good morning, Council. My name is Timothy Moore, my operations manager for the Tyler Service Center. This morning, I do a presentation on the completed water main repairs. But before I do that, I want to say a great thanks to the City of Tyler. We had a difficult time going through the storm, but the entire team, from the city manager to communication, came together, and we really worked throughout the night for seven days, sun with no sleep, to get this job done. So I just want to say thanks to the City of Tyler for your hand in helping the service center. I have a map, I'm going to show the map first. Sorry, I don't have a cover sheet, but there should be a map to... Yes. This map that you're seeing right now is showing the completed water main repairs. And we had 111 that was completed. And these different colored dots that you see is representing the date of receiving the water main repairs. And in some of those colors, you have multiple water mains that were repaired during that time. And there was 111 that was completed. And this is the winter storm area where we did have the 111 water main that were repaired. The amount of water that was lost, 12,234 and 239, and the total amount of water that were repaired by the city service center was 59. And also want to give a great thanks to our vendors, our contractors, who came out and extended their time and their team to help accomplish these repairs. A U. S. U. repaired 19 of 14,000, and Reynolds &amp; Kay did 26. This morning, I went and asked the city council to ratify that $98,906 for the work performed during the storm.
This is just for Shoals Park, correct?
Yes, sir. And we do have another invoice that's pending that you come in until late.
So let me ask you, when they go out there and repair these main breaks, but now there's the street that's just all still kind of messed up with cones and signs where you don't drive through, where the street hadn't been repaired, what comes next?
What that... We do what's called a street cut, and it goes over to the street department, and then they come out and do a street cut ticket and flatten it all out and make it look nice and pretty. So, and then the cones get picked up, and that should be the better thing to be removed.
Okay. Just want to make sure they don't get forgotten.
Oh.
So the next council meeting, you'll probably come back with Reynolds &amp; Kay's expenses for their repairs, and then the invoice you mentioned that Schul hadn't. But I want to compliment you for the work that your department did during that, and for our local contractors that came out during that horrific time period where water, water, water was everywhere.
Thank you.
That's why I think we have to continue to support our local contractors and give them preference when we're approving contracts.
You looked a little more well-rested than you did that week.
And I am, truly. Well-rested.
All right.
I got one question. I noticed that you got zero remaining. Do you think it's... You think that's over? Like the... From the winter storm?
Yes, that's correct. We gave the completion date, which was March 8th.
I think that's probably it.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on M. 8. Motion by McGee, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tim.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Y'all need a break, or push through?
I don't think the new mayor knows what breaks are yet.
I'm still a young man.
That's what happens when y'all are out on all... All out on spring break, though. Anyway, I'm good. It's happy to see y'all, you guys. We did survive there, so... That was a... That's been a challenge, but I'm here to talk today about Legacy Trail. And back in 2019, we made application, if y'all remember, we brought a resolution forward to extend Legacy Trail. We were looking at the extension occurring from our spot right by Fresh, all the way up Old Jacksonville Highway, and then eventually also part of that project to make it up to the Rose Garden and the Rose Complex project. And Tech Stud came back and said that we had a great application, but they wanted us to reduce the amount of trail we were putting in. We wanted to look at about a $3 million budget and revise that application. And also, because of the widening along Old Jacksonville Highway, they wanted us to take that section out and come back to it. So this phase does have a gap. If you saw the proposed map that was in your packet, there is a gap there. So we're taking it now from Stewart Park, which was donated to us, and we hadn't had the ability to do anything with that part, but that would be a trailhead facility, and then we would take it all the way up to the Rose Garden at that point. And that would be what we're applying for. So we amended that, came back for a resolution in July of 2019. We've been on hold with that project until contingency funds became available, which they did, and the Tech Stud Commission will look at approving these projects at the end of April. So they wanted us to reaffirm our commitment to the project, because it had been quite some time. So we're... Today, we're asking you to reaffirm through this resolution that the City of Tyler is committed to the 20% match. It's a little bit over a $3 million project, and our portion would be a little bit over a half a million. So that's really what we're here to do today, is to ask for your approval of this resolution, so we can go ahead and get that submitted and move this project to the next level.
You may have said this, but is there... Once this portion's done, is there a way in the future to close the gap between Legacy 1 and Stewart Park?
We really need to work with Tech Stud on, as they're widening that project, we need to go ahead, if we're putting a sidewalk in, how can we work with them as a partner to oversize that so that connection happens? It's critical, because there will be a big gap in this trail, and it was to be a regional trail north to south, so... Or south to north was the plan, so... And then eventually, we would like to carry Legacy Trail over to downtown, is the goal.
And Stephanie, it's so fun on Saturday mornings to see the families that use Legacy Trail 1.
It's just beautiful.
It's just heartwarming. I never thought it would be that well-accepted, but it certainly has been, and lots of families there.
Great, and it's very busy. I mean, I'm sure you've seen it's a busy... All of our trails are very busy, so it's that quality-of-life element that we're looking for. And so anytime we can secure grant funds for that, we're looking to do that.
Great job.
I agree. Any other questions for Stephanie?
Move to approve M...
Nine?
Nine.
Nine.
Motion by Sellers, second by McGee. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Need a break.
Okay, we've got to take a break for five minutes. Old man over here is going to kick it up.
We all need a break.
Okay, five minutes.
All right, okay.
We'll be back.
We're almost to the end.
Linda spoke up first, but I didn't hear anything.
I wanted to say you had Kay first, because I'm right behind you.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, you're not an old man, remember?
Sitting too long.
Madam Clark, we just want to prolong here. Make it one minute before. What color is your mutant ring? See? You're fine. See, you're fine.